All right, coming back from closed session, it is now six twenty-two. F, reconvened to open session. It is now, like I said, six twenty-three. G, announcement of actions taken in closed session, there were no items taken in closed session. Item H, comments from the public, the board will take any and all comments from the public related to an item on the agenda, or any other item of the district business that is not on the agenda. We have Maria Bravo.
Testing, okay, it works. Good evening. My name is Maria Bravo, I am a classified employee and have been employed by Callexico Unified for twenty-two years. I, as many classified employees, believe and trust the merit system. For someone like myself and many others that don't have relatives, close friends, or relying on the COMPASS system, the PC works for us. We are here on our own merit by applying, qualifying, taking an exam, and being in the top three ranks, which I have been many times. The merit system is not broken, it is a process that has procedures in place, procedures that work for the majority. As an employee, if I am interested in a position, I apply with plenty of time. Employees do need to update their resume, application, and letters of reference, which I have done several times, and the process may at times take long. Therefore, you need to give yourself plenty of time to apply and submit the application by the deadline, and this means the date and the time. We may be the only school district that has a merit system in Imperial County, but we're also the only unified school district in Imperial County. Imperial County also has a merit system in place. The Sandiel County Office of ED, an agency that Callexico Unified relies on, is also a merit system. I don't believe that there is a gender or age discrimination. I have not seen it nor heard of it, and I have been here twenty-two years. The merit system rules are established by the California Education Code, and I don't believe that the ED code will willfully violate an applicant or an employee's gender, age, sex, or marital status. If you need to find any more information on the merit system, it's in the education code found in chapter six, article five and six, beginning with the section four-five-two-two-zero of the education code. The California Schools Employees Association also believes in the merit system, and we take trainees, I brought this booklet today because this was provided by the California School Employees Association, letting us know what our rights are, and what policies are in place, and what ED codes protect us from any type of violations that any school board may want to do against us. We believe in the merit system, we voted it in, the classified voted it in, and we will continue to support the merit system, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bravo. Item I, presentations. I one, Heffernan Memorial Health Court District.
Board President Calderon, we put this one on the agenda, but unfortunately, we do not have a presenter from the Heffernan Memorial District.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I two, LCAPCSUSD local indicators.
And we have Ms. Ramirez giving the presentation.
Good evening. I don't know if it's working. You want to? Good evening, Board of Trustees and community members, staff who are here present. Every year, we have to present to you the local control indicators, which is information that we will be uploading into the California Dashboard. But today, before I start doing that, I do want to go really quickly over the LCAP that is on the agenda to be approved. Last board meeting, we had the public hearing. But just to give you a quick overview, if we go to the next slide, we kept the six goals that we had originally, and based on our stakeholder input, you see there are titles of the actions that we have. The only difference you're going to see is that in the past, our LCAP was composed of what we call supplementary concentration funds, and these are funds that we get to increase services specifically for three subgroups, which is our foster youth, English learners, and our socioeconomic disadvantaged students. When we developed the LCAP four years ago, there were some actions under the different goals that were under base funding, general funds. So for example, there was a goal in there, an action, that we're going to buy textbooks. Textbooks is a core function. But we had it in there because we wanted our community to see that we buy textbooks. It wasn't with these funding, but it was part of our goal. So the recommendation was to remove anything that was base funding and leave only services that are supplementary concentration funds. So all those were removed, the rest that we had there remained. So all of the ones you see in goal one, for example, are things that we are going to continue to use, and what you see in blue are new actions. So under goal one, we added paraprofessional-professional development, because our paraprofessionals provide direct instruction to our students. For example, in comparison to a custodian, for example, they do provide a service, but in terms of educational services, our paraprofessionals do provide that. So we set money aside for professional development. So when they want to go to conferences, we have that funding available. The other action is a portrait of a graduate. That is some of the work that Mr. Lucio Padilla had been conducting with a community of students that had already graduated with us, current students, teachers, community members, colleges, and so forth. And so our goal is to develop a draft of what every student in Callexico High School has to have when they graduate. So that is a process, and right now, it's going to become an action, and our hope is that after this three-year LCAP, it will become a goal, so that it'll be like our mission, our goal, that every student that graduates from Callexico High School has all the qualities of a portrait of a graduate. Next goal. Goal number two had to do with technology. So we kept every single action that we originally had, and so that one was untouched. So if you look at the new LCAP, it's very similar to the older LCAP. Next one. Number three, that was college and career. Again, this one pretty much stayed the same. There was no new action, we're going to maintain it as is. Number four. People engagement and school climate. On this one, we kept most of the activities that we have been doing in the past. We added additional funding for case management. This case management is going to be done, so it actually has funding for extra hours for our own staff to provide case management to foster youth, our English learners, and our socioeconomic disadvantaged, especially if they're under the subgroup of homeless, for example, or special needs. Next goal, number five, was our goal on parent involvement. So we kept the same actions. What we will be changing perhaps is the type of trainings we offer and the way we build capacity with our parents. We have a lot of our parents that have gone through different trainings, and our goal is to not have that group of parents start training other parents. So we will be working hand-in-hand with our parents so that they become our trainers, kind of what PKE does. PKE is ran by parents who have been trained, and now they're the ones presenting. So we want to build something within our district to continue the same practice. And then number six is our safety goal. So again, this one, we removed anything that had to do with base funding, and we kept everything that had to do with safety and protecting our students and our staff and their health. The one action that we added was providing additional playgrounds for all sites. So that funding was built into this LCAP. Perhaps not enough to build all the playgrounds, so that every year, at least one school got a better playground. So that's our LCAP, and essentially, it basically stayed very much the same. Now, the local indicators, which is the next slide. So these are measures that we have to do locally in order to put it in what they call the California Dashboard, which is a website that is public to all the community. Next slide. So the local indicators, we have to do them annually. We don't have to have them board-approved, but we do have to do a presentation. It's going to measure our progress, we have to report it to you. And then the results, I have to go into the dashboard, I have a special password that I go in, and this is going to be done in November, and I input the information that I'm sharing with you today. Next one. So we have to work with eight priorities at the school level, and there's two that go to the county. Out of those indicators, some of them you're going to see in the dashboard, and others are what they call locally. So the ones I'm going to be sharing with you are priority one, two, three, seven, and eight. To go to the next slide. Priority one, we have to talk about basic conditions at school, so I will be sharing what that means in the next slides. Two is implementation of state academic standards. Three is parent and family engagement. Six is school climate, and seven is access to a broad course of study. Next slide. So once I do the presentation to you, once I add the information into the dashboard, then they mark it as, did we meet it, did we not meet it, or was not met for three years? It's not actually graded, it's the fact that you input the information in the dashboard, it's automatically considered met. If you go to the next slide. So the first one that we're going to look at is basics. So what exactly do they want us to do under this priority? So number one is we have to look at appropriately assigned teachers. So we're going to look at teacher credentials. I mean, access to curriculum and align instructional materials and safe and clean and functional school facilities. So if you look at the next slide, this is what the dashboard looks like. So this is an example from last year. So last year, we had five misassignments, or teachers were not credentialed in the area for English learners, or we had a vacancy there. We had zero students without materials, which means students received a textbook. And then the last one is how many deficiencies did we have when I walked our facilities? So I'm going to start providing you the data for this year, so if you go to the next slide. So in terms of credentialing, this year, we had two vacant positions at Callexico High School, and we had one vacant position at Kennedy Gardens. They were eventually filled, two of them were eventually filled, but one of them was really hard to get a teacher, and I'll explain which ones they were right now. The textbook sufficiency, it is my responsibility to present to you every October if every student had access to core material. And when they invite core, they usually talk about English, math, science, and history. And then this year, we didn't have the county come and do the walkthroughs for the sites to look at the deficiencies, instead, we had an internal process, or our own MNO staff went ahead and did this for us. Next slide. So the classes that did not have a teacher in October, which is when we have our CALPATS reporting, was Kennedy Gardens, fifth grade, newcomer class, they now have a teacher. And then at Callexico High School, the Navy class, the NJROTC, and the computer app. As of, well, now that the school ended, we were never able to get our computer app teacher. For the ROTC class, we ended up luckily getting back our teacher who had left, Commander Victor, so he's now back with us. And the next slide, this is the data regarding the visits to our sites. There's a report that we filled in, and we do calculations, and we get a percentage rating for every school. So on the top, I circled D, so you know that what we are counting is deficiencies. And then the percentile of the majority of our schools was between the ninety and the ninety-eight point ninety-nine, so most of our schools were categorized as in good standing. Next slide. This is the data for the last four years. We did have an increase in deficiencies. We had a hundred and ninety-nine total compared to last year, where we had gone down to ninety-one. And what you're going to see is where exactly did we have more deficiencies compared to others? And it was in interior surfaces, okay? So it was interior surfaces, and there were some electrical. Just to remind you that sometimes the electrical is, for example, you see some wires that are running around your desk right now. If we don't have the plastic covering, it's considered an electrical issue. And we did find out that a lot of our schools, we didn't have students in class, so the rooms were emptied, and the desks were there, and we didn't go back to cover the wires because there were no students in there. So when we did the walkthrough, we didn't think about it, we didn't plan it, and it turns out that that's why we had some of these issues. If you go to the next slide, you see the comparison from previous years. The yellow is this current year. Green is the previous year, and then blue is two thousand eighteen-nineteen. So you see where the increase was, was interior surfaces. It could have been the walls that were painted, it could have been that things were dirty inside, it could have been the tile, so different things could have happened. And then you see the electrical, which was also the rise. And then the overall cleanliness, that one had sixteen compared to others. Again, our schools were not being used by students, and so when we happened to do the walkthrough, the overall cleanliness was not as good as when we're physically in the classroom. And the next one talks about priority number two. So this is on academic standards. For this one, we either do a narrative, or we use a reflection tool, which is a survey that we give out to our sites. So if you go to the next slide. There's different questions on this survey, and we are scored between a one through five. The leadership team had an opportunity to work together with the different content areas and score, score how we're doing. So one is the exploration level, two is beginning, three is initial, four is full implementation, and five is full implementation and sustainability. Our goal is to get a five. So the first question on the next slide had to do with progress in providing professional learning for teaching to the recently adopted academic standards. So you see our scoring in the language arts was a four. Our English language arts was adopted several years ago. Our English language development had a three. Some of our schools just barely adopted it last year. Mathematics, we've had it already for some years already. And then the next generation science, you see a two, is because we barely adopted the materials, we're getting it in July, and so that's why the score was so low, because our science books at the elementary level have been outdated for many years. So we're now able to purchase the new books, and our hope is that throughout next year, teachers will be receiving the training. The high school has been adopting textbooks, they do not follow the adoption process like the elementaries in the junior highs, so they get to adopt every year. And then social science, we got a three. At the secondary, they have brand-new curriculum, and I believe at the sixth grade also, but our kinder through first, history textbooks are outdated. So that would be the next adoption that we do with the elementary teachers. Next one. Next one had to do with progress in making instructional materials that are aligned to the newly adopted academic standards. So if you see ELA overall, that we scored a five. English language development, we have a four, our math is a five, and those are the curriculum that we've had for the most years. Next generation science and history at the elementary level have been outdated, so yes, we do deserve a two on that one, because we're barely able to catch up with the new standards or the next generation science, and we're hoping that next year, we'll purchase the history, social science for the elementary sites. The next question had to do with progress in implementing policies or programs to support staff in identifying areas where they can improve in delivering instruction that is aligned to the academic standards. So most of the ones that we've been working with, we had an average score of a three. And again, you're going to see twos in the next generation science and history, because that's the kind of work that we're going to be working in the next year. The next one had to do with other courses, other academic standards. So you're going to see that in our CTE, or Career Tech Education Courses, when it came to implementing the standards, the overall score was a four. This question was only given to our secondary sites, the high school, because we don't do CTE classes in the elementary. Health education content standards did go to everybody, and we did notice that a lot of our elementary schools have a need for us to go over health education and how do we embed it in their existing instructional minutes. Physical education was a three average. And then we have visual and performing arts and world language. The world languages went to the secondary, that's why we have a score of four. But we did see a need to embed visual and performing arts. Again, if you think of an elementary teacher, they have to teach all content areas, and now we expect them to teach health and visual and performing arts. So we don't have enough minutes in the school day to add a separate topic, and instead, we have to figure ways of how we're going to implement these standards with our already existing standards. Next one. During the seventeen-eighty school year, including the summer, and/or during the eighteen-ninety school year, including the summer, they wanted us to rate our success at engaging the following activities. So these are backdated because they included summer work. So professional learning needs for groups of teachers or staff, we had a score of four. And then identifying professional learning needs of individual teachers, that was a score of three. Our staff believes that most of our professional development is directed to all, but what they want to see is professional development that is individualized for teachers. And then the last one is providing support for teachers and standards that they have not yet mastered. So what are some of the standards that the teachers and their students are struggling with, and what kind of support we can provide for them? Next slide. So overall, my job is to do a summary from what I was verbally explaining to you, what are some of the things that we have to continue working with? And I just did a whole bunch of things that we're working on. So we're working on district comment assessments, diagnostic assessments. Today, we had a training for administrators that we're later going to provide to our academic support teachers, and then return to our teachers on how to look at data and how do we change some of our instructional practices to support student learning. Okay, the next priority is priority number three. This has to do with parent engagement. Again, this one last year was new, and now we have to do another self-reflection tool. So if you go to the next slide. The tool that the state created has three sections that we're going to focus on. One is building relationships with our staff and families. Two is building partnerships, and three is decision-making. So we had a meeting with our parent advisory committee, which is the next slide. And then the parents helped us score this. So we did a presentation, and we said, this is what we've done so far in the district. And based on what we presented to you and the data that we shared, we want you to score us, and we had really good conversations with our parents. So overall, in building relationships, for number one, how do we rate the LEA's progress in developing capacity of staff? They scored us with a three. They believe that we need to work with our administrators and our teachers on how to build relationships with families. So they're asking for professional development for that. Number two is creating a welcoming environment for all families in the community. The majority felt that we're doing a good job, but they think that there's still room for improvement, and that's why we got a four. Three is the progress in supporting staff to learn about each family's strengths, cultures, languages, and goals for children. We did share with them that our goal through our LCAP and our Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant is that we wanted to do case management and empathy interviews, because the best way for us to know what are the needs of, for example, a youth that is in what we consider foster youth or homeless, is to really understand what their story is, because we sometimes make assumptions of what we think they need, but if we ask them exactly what their needs are and we interview them, then we're going to be able to really know and understand what are their strengths and their cultures and their languages. And then four, what is our progress in developing multiple opportunities for school sites to engage with two-way communication? So that, they scored us with a five. They say that the district has done a very good job of communicating with parents, especially during the pandemic. I think what they felt was even better communication because of the need when we went into distance learning. And again, even though we got a five, they say that sometimes they know that we give out a lot of information, but not all parents participate. So even though we have good communication, they want us to be able to attract more parents, and they tell us, you have to sell, you have to sell the schools, you have to sell and tell them why it's important for them to come and what they're going to gain. So they had a lot of very good ideas that we're going to be implementing this coming year. The next one has to do with building partnership. So they rated us on providing professional learnings and support to teachers, a three. Again, they feel that we do a lot of training for parents, but now we need to do the training for teachers and administrators on how they are going to partner with families, because they feel that maybe they don't know how to build that partnership. Six is rate the LEA's progress in providing families with information and resources to support student learning and development at home. So they scored us a four on that one. Five, implementing policies or programs for teachers to meet with families and students to discuss students' progress and ways to work together. How can we improve that? They know that we have the parent conferences at the elementaries, and we have open house, and we have our reports that we send out, but they say that they feel that there's still a lot of room for improvement, especially at the secondary level, because they do see that there's a lot of parents that disconnect once their children reach to secondary, and so they're hoping that our parents, instead of saying they're old enough, they don't need us, is the other way around. Now that they are at the high school, we need to be more involved. Number eight is progress to support families to understand and exercise their legal rights and advocate for their own students and all students. So we did share with them about the information we send out, like the immigration status and what their rights are. We showed them about the annual update, the annual notification they get every year, and I explained to them what the packet was, they go, oh, Ms. Ramirez, I know that's great, but we would like if every month, you do like a presentation on what are some of those rights? Because I was explaining to them, for example, do you know that we can't request anything out of you? That's called requesting like fees, and they go, you shouldn't be paying for anything. It goes, we didn't know. And we've been advocating this for the past three, four years when this came out, and we worked with principals, and we even told our principals to please not to ask even for donations, because some teachers will send a list, and I'm pretty sure you've seen them, a list of things to bring to school, like tissue paper and hand sanitizer and things like that, and we told our sites, you need to stop doing that. Whatever you need, you let us know, we buy it, because we shouldn't put the burden on our parents, not even for Kleenex. And so we have to change that little culture. And so that has, we have to change that little culture, because that was something that was done for years at our schools. So they do want us to tell them what their rights are, so that they know what to expect from our schools. And then the last one, number three, is seeking input for decision-making. So under the first one, they gave us a four, and that's building the capacity of supporting principals and staff to effectively engage in families and advisory groups. So for this one, they were talking about their school site councils, their DLEC, their ELEC, their LCAP. So they were very glad that through all these different advisory groups, they were able to learn a lot. So a lot of our parents started with school site council, eventually became participants of the LCAP meetings, and now they went through other activities like the Pique and the Cabe, no, the Cabe program? Number 10 is rate the LEAs' progress in building capacity of supporting family members to effectively engage in advisory groups and decision-making. So here, they were saying, there's got to be a way for us to be able to recruit more parents, because it seems like it's always the same ones. And we totally agree, because when we see our parents, and we can even name them by names already, because we've developed a relationship with them from seeing them in all the different activities that we have. So I can probably say that the majority of our parents that are in our advisory, district-wide advisory committee, they are our migrant-packed parents. They are our DLEC parents. They are parents who have done the school site council, and I always see them in the LCAP forums. So we build capacity with a few, so how do we spread that? Eleven is to provide all families with opportunities to provide input in policies and programs and implementing strategies and reach and seek input from unrepresented groups in the school community. And so they were very happy that we have, for example, our Family Resource Center in Ortencia, who's always advocating for our foster youth and our homeless youth, and then Sylvia advocating for our English learners. So they're very familiar with the system we have, and so that's why they rated us a four, but they also feel that there's always room for improvement. And then number 12 is the progress in providing opportunities to have families, teachers, principals, and district administrators work together to plan, design, implement, and evaluate family engagement and activities at our school and district levels. We got a score of three, because they would like that what we do with advisory period and with this activity, they would like to have something like this activity done at every school, just so that every school has like their little evaluation on how they're doing in this type of rating. The next one, slide 34, is information on our parent survey. So we also gave the California Parent Survey, we give it every two years. This year was particularly difficult, because everybody was doing distance learning, but nonetheless, we got 1,132 responses, and we use this information to also guide the LCAP. So if you go to the next slide, I just took a little bit, there's a lot of questions in here, but because it had to do with connecting to schools, we had 89% of our parents that strongly agreed that our school promptly responds to their phone calls. 90% that they would do encourage or encourage them to be active partners with the school. 86 that the school actively seeks input before making any important decisions. 90% of them feel welcome. 95% say that the school staff treats them with respect, and 88 say that the school staff take parent concerns seriously. Okay? The next one, more serious questions has, go ahead, next one? Now, this one I liked, because this year there was a section in the survey that was just yes and no questions. So it wasn't agree or strongly agree, it was either a yes or a no. So 44% of our parents said yes, that they participated in a meeting of the parent-teacher organization or association. So you notice you don't have the 80%, the 90% like we saw in the previous one. So this one really provided good data. 18% of our parents said that they participated in fundraising for the school. 6% said that they served on a school committee, and this is exactly what the parents were saying. We need to get more parents involved in doing service to our schools. 31 said that they attended a school or class event. 54% attended a general school meeting, and 22% said that they served as a volunteer in their child's classroom or elsewhere in the school. So our goal in two years, when we give out this survey again, is to increase those numbers through building capacity with our existing parent leaders. So we'll do a lot of work with them, because we're telling our parents, parents listen to parents more than parents listen to administrators. And so we're going to try and do some work with that. And then the next one is just the narrative, so, oh, well, I didn't put it there, but I do a narrative also of everything that I just explained. Number six has to do with a local climate survey. So for this one, it's now related to students, how they feel that they're safe or connected to the school. So that one's called the Healthy Kids Survey, and we also do it every two years, and it's by grade span. So we do a K-5, we do fifth grade for six, eight, we do eighth grade, and then for nine to 12, we do ninth and 11th grade. So if you go to the next one, again, it was a hard year to get responses. Nonetheless, we got 2,498 responses in February. You see the numbers for fifth grade, you see the numbers for secondary. The NT means non-traditional, so that's Aurora. So in the next one, so there was a question related to connected, how connected they were with school. So you see the percentages of how many of the students strongly agree or agreed, and I forget to mention that it's, this was through distance learning. The kiddos were still not in person when they answered this. So fifth grade, 74% agreed or strongly agreed that they feel connected to the school. 65% for seventh grade, ninth grade 54, and 11th grade 55. And if you notice, as the students get older, the percentage goes down. So they feel less connected as they get older. Caring adult relationships, you see fifth grade, 71%, 764. Ninth grade, where students were probably felt that there was no adult relationships compared to the rest of our grades, but you also see the same pattern. The students in the lower grades feel that there's a more caring relationship, and especially in the elementary, you have the same teacher all year long versus a secondary, you only see your teacher every day, one period, and only for like 45 to 50 minutes. And then the last one, last column, is meaningful participation. How meaningful was their participation in their school? And this is where you see how our students were impacted with distance learning. You see the low percentages, especially at the 11th grade, they did not agree or did not strongly agree, that their participation through distance learning was meaningful. Next one? In terms of safety, even though our students were not physically on campus for a year and a half, they still answered the way they perceived safety in school. For fifth grade, it was 84%, seventh grade 72%, and then as the students go up in grades, the percentage goes down when it comes to school being perceived as safe. If they experienced harassment or bullying, and for the elementary students, the question was targeted mean jokes, the percentage are lower. I actually thought it was going to be way lower, because the students were not physically on campus, but many of them have had experience in the past, and that's how they were grading themselves. If they saw a weapon at school, again, they haven't been in school for a year and a half, but yet the percentage is more than likely to reflect that in their past experience in school, have they ever seen a weapon? The question does not describe what a weapon is. Could be a knife, could be a steak knife that they bring home, because as a principal, I can tell you that I had at least three incidents when students carried a knife from school, because they were afraid to walk to school, or pocket knives. For the elementary, even a lighter can be counted as a weapon. It could have been a toy gun. And so we don't exactly know what the student was referring to when they said that they saw a weapon. And then this year included the alcohol or drug use. We have, at the fifth grade, we had 5% of the students that responded that they have used alcohol or drugs. In seventh grade, 5%, ninth, 7%, and 11th, 14%. We just had a presentation with the DEA in one of our meetings, and we're hoping to partner with the DEA and the county, so that they can bring awareness of all the drugs that, and tobacco use and everything that's happening in our community, because it is happening. And we've been addressing the physical safety, you know, putting, having catapulted, when our visitors come in, we're checking on them. And one of the things that just stood out when the DEA was talking to us was, does anybody worry about drugs? That's not something that's really emphasized, but being a border town, he says it's something that we need to worry about, and so he'll more than likely be working with all the county schools, and I'm pretty sure that we're going to be partnering with him too. The next one? So overall, we give a presentation, and so we will describe in the verbiage that I put in the dashboard about everything that we did for the distance learning and preparing for our school's reopening, with all the PPE and the signage and the screening and the disinfecting, so all of that will be part of our wording. And then in the next slide, all of this is what we have already implemented that was stalled, because most of these activities where we're physically in there, such as our visitor management system, our catapult for emergencies, Alice to train our students how to react to an intruder, and then all the other PPIs or programs that we have, such as character counts, conscious disciplines, habit habits, et cetera. And we are going to continue to work on building our multi-tiered systems of supports. We already started that work today with the principals, because we want to address how we're going to address the need of a child as a whole, both, I mean, using the, looking at them as how they're doing academically, how is their behavior, and how are they socially, emotionally doing, especially the social emotional, with what all of our families are going through as a result of our pandemic. And then we have a new program called Panorama that has really good surveys that our students took that tell you if, how they felt, lonely, depressed, isolated, so we have a lot of information on that on our students too. The next slide is on broad courses of study. So how are we providing access to our students in multiple areas? I mean, if you're an English learner, do you have access to an AP class? If you're a foster youth, are you meaning the college and career indicator? So we need to make sure that all of our students are given equal opportunity. And again, if you look at the next slide, it was a reflection tool. So this one is not a survey, it was more about summarizing. So what I did is I sent a series of questions to every administrator to reflect and tell me how is it that they address this part of the priority? So if I go to the next slide? So we asked them different questions, like we asked them to identify tools that they use to track the extent to which all students have access to and are enrolled in a broad course of study. So we said, well, how do you do your master schedule? And how do you determine who goes into what classes? So in the next one, there's a narrative. Most of our principals stated that they use synergy to track our students and to build master schedules. At the high school level, they use the different filters. Students actually have a choice in surveys, and that's how they give them the elective courses that they want. As a district, we're developing and implementing a six-year plan. For a period of time, we tried to use Navians. Navians was very complicated. Our counselors were struggling with the program, because it was, it was like an empty program, and we have to build everything. It's really complicated. So we decided that we weren't going to use that anymore, it wasn't an effective tool. And so what we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing and working with our counselors to do six-year plans. We already started some of that work, so that we're able to track our students, and what we're going to be doing differently is we're going to be using our own system, our own synergy, because that's what we know. And so we have, thank God, Eduardo Perez, our IT coordinator, who's going to be supporting us with that. And so the high school also talks about how they're trying to improve their CTE pathways. Right now, we're looking at monies through the strong workforce to look into an engineering pathway for our students. Our AP classes, I know that Ms. Williams has made every effort to include AP classes, even the AP chemistry was very popular, the AP computer classes and the AP psychology. So at all schools, including the high school, we continue to use Avid and the Avid strategies. The high school also added the mobility and stretching classes, so that it's not just all PE. And then we have activities for teen sports, and you've heard of the Unified Physical Classes for our students with special needs. Let me see, oh, we also have the Cadet Class. Now you know it's for four years. We've now been, now we can say that we are, could credit our students under the College and Career for having the, being part of the Navy for all those years. And Aurora continues to build their emergency response course, or their fire class, the fire classes for their students. And then Aurora did share that they use something called the Career Locker to track student interest. The high school does surveys. Next one, oh, the junior high, very similar to what the high schools do. So they also use synergy to do their master schedules, they also do surveys, and what they do that they said that they do different is they actually look at teacher credentials and see what can a teacher offer besides what they do. So for example, I'm by nature, I'm a math teacher, that's my credential, but I also have a Spanish credential. I opted to teach math, but if they ever needed me to teach a math, a Spanish section, I would be able to do that. So they know exactly what their teacher credentials are and how they can be creative. So you see some of the junior highs are offering the STEM or the STEAM, and if you have a math credential, you can teach the STEM or STEAM classes. A science teacher cannot teach it. So you really need to understand what your teacher credentials are and what are some of the things that they could offer. So that, other than the Avid and the student recommendations, very much similar to the high school. The elementary, I mentioned earlier how they're very limited, but one of the things that we were able to do was bring Avid to the elementary, and they have all classes, all core classes, including designated ELD and the RTI time band, they squeeze it in in fifth and sixth grade, but what they would like to see is how do we embed the visual and performing arts and the health sciences in the curriculum that we already have. So again, they do the Avid, and we're starting to train our little ones about thinking about what they want to do in their future with college and career pathway lessons. And also, we do a lot of SEL lessons now at the elementary level. And then our students with exceptional needs through the IAP process and through transition, when they transition to the junior high, we also make sure that they have access to all of the curriculum. Sometimes we have students who are in the special needs classes, but we pull them out when they're ready to go, and for example, and take a math class, or when they're ready to socialize and be in a PE class. So we adjust their schedules to make sure that we include them in our regular school activities. Next one? This is how we summarize how students have access to and progress over time. So again, if you go to the next one, it's pretty much very similar, so I kind of summarized some of the information that they had already provided. So very similar to what I just described, but I broke it again down for elementary, high school, and junior high. They actually talked about barriers too. So if you go to the next slide, they ask us, well, what are some of the barriers? And if you go to the next one, I think this is everybody's barrier, is time, especially at the elementary, there's not enough time. Clear communication with students, because we tell students and we notify them, but sometimes they miss the survey of their choices for the classes. Time to create six-year plans for every student. So our counselors want to do the six-year plan, but how do they get to every single student? And so that's some of the work that we're going to be working with. Aligning teacher credentials and master schedules has always been a challenge, because sometimes you want to get creative, but if the teacher doesn't have a credential, then we can't offer the courses. Parent participation, especially once they start getting to the junior high and high school, we see that they start participating, so it's important that they understand the options for their students. Limited number of elective offerings, and you've heard me here say that we now have to offer designated ELD, so that becomes an elective, and if you're an English learner, then you have to take that class, which means you might no longer be able to take a computer class or a Spanish class, because this is what the state wants us to do for our English learners. Existing instructional schedules impacted by the number of courses that are already being offered. Our RTI, it's much easier to do RTI in the elementary than it is in our junior high classes, because at the junior high, you're already impacted with your six classes. Teacher transfers to other side is also a barrier, and need for curriculum for health and the visual performing arts, which I mentioned, and this is probably the third time I mentioned on that one. And then the, I think, believe it's the last one, is how do we use all of this to inform the development of the LCAP? So if you go to the next slide? Here is when we decided, well, if Navians is not working, then let's not use it anymore. And again, these discussions was not a decision of mine, is through the LCAP process and talking to our counselors and our families and our educators, they say, you know what, if it's not working, why use it? Let's develop something different. What are some of the things that we have to do is we have to promote our CTE classes. I think one of our goals is that by the time a student graduates from high school, they should have an option of being either ready to go to the career or to be going to university. So we want our students to be both, college and career. So if I can be A through G ready and be able to apply to any university, but I can also apply to a technical school, because maybe I took the culinary class and I was certificated, then that gives me two different options. And a lot of our students are between two different things, and I always say the example of my son, he wanted to be a chef, but also he wanted to be an engineer, and I told him, go for the engineer, because you're probably going to live better, and then you can take the hobby of a chef. He did go for a year for UCSD, and after a year, he says, Mama, I don't like this, I want to be a chef. And he left the UC system to go into becoming a chef, and then he graduated, and he's now a chef. And so sometimes they don't know what they want. So if we're able to educate them about what are their interests, and even if they have those two choices, and then they make that decision, then our students will be better off, and parents are going to be saving a lot of money, because they won't be wasting money on something that they really didn't like. money on something that they really didn't like. So, and there's more information that I keep going, I could go on and on, discuss about the different revisions, decisions, and actions that we've done. At the end of the day, if you go to the last slide. So everything that we do in terms of data, conversations that we had, whether classified staff, our certificated staff, our administrators, our parents, our students, there, we collect all that data and we share it with everybody, and that's how we drive our LCAP actions. That's also information that we use for our expanded learning opportunity grants. And so we hear the needs, and that's how our LCAP is built. The principals also use some of the information to build their SPSAs, because at the end of the day, all plans are integrated, and the goal at the end is to make sure that our students are truly, what we eventually will have to have a portrait of a graduate and have the, the plan that we want them to, to, to be able to graduate and succeed when they, once they leave us here at the Callexico High School. Any questions?
Excellent report. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Elisa, for all the work that you put into it, you and your team. I know it takes a lot of time out, extra hours, and just want to thank you for, for, you know, continued success you're having with this program.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elisa. It was a really good, a really good description of what is happening. I have two questions. Can Aurora students take AP courses at the high school if they want to?
So right now, we don't have the students, the numbers to create an AP class, but one of the things that we've done in the past is if a student wanted to take a class, they can be transported to go to the high school. Just like the CTE, we have Aurora students who want to be in the law enforcement class, and they're, they were transported to the high school for that class, because we don't have the numbers to create another class. But yes, students can travel to the high school to take some of those courses.
Okay. And number two, for elementary, for the elementary students, are you planning on doing more of the VAPA that we used? I remember a couple of years ago, we did ban for, for the elementary. Are we still doing that?
Right now, the only, the only ban that we offer is for fifth and sixth grade. So we, we, we have talked about doing lessons. So this is the part that I'm saying, the, the elementary teachers have so many things to teach. So instead of adding another content like we do for secondary, is how can we embed in their existing lessons? For example, we can read an article about health in language arts, and do, and we cover health under an article with language arts. If they are going to be doing a project-based learning, well, why can't the project-based be, be, include the creativity part of using visual performance? So you could do a dance, you could do a drama. So it's, it's more about being creative, creative and embedding those standards in what they're already doing. So that's why we're trying to work with them.
Okay. Thank you, Elisa. Okay, that was. Not J, that was LI2, LCAP CSU Local Indicators. Item J, concern agenda, all items appearing will be acted upon one motion without discussion unless there's any item is pulled for, for separate consideration and action.
So moved, and just want to make a quick comment, thank the Blue Knights for their donation of 31 bikes also as well.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. Romero. All those in favor, a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Informational items. Item K. K1, superintendent's report. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, trustees, admin team staff, and community, and everyone watching via livestream. So summer is here. We've been actively planning for next school year. We're happy to announce that all of our COSD promotions and graduations were held this year. Due to the COVID-19 safety protocols, we did separate the high school graduation to two different ones, but they were wonderful and they were amazing. So kudos to all the staff, certificated, classified staff at Callexico High School, the administration, the teachers, classified, that put in so much work to make it such an incredible experience, memorable for our students. And congratulations again to the class of 2021, as they go on to, to pursue their goals and, and their dreams. On Monday, June 21st, we began with the first day of our 50% hybrid and distance learning summer programs. The programs will be open until July 22nd of 2021. The programs are being housed at Callexico High School 9th Grade Campus at Aurora, Cesar Chavez, and Enrique Camarena Junior High School. We currently have the following number of students enrolled in our program. So to give you an example, at Cesar Chavez Elementary School, we have the District Technology Program, our Distance Learning Program, migrant, sped programs. We have a total of 440 students participating. At Enrique Camarena Junior High School, we have the District Technology Program, the District Distance Learning Program, migrant and sped programs. We have a total of 227 students participating. At Callexico High School 9th Grade Campus, we have the District Credit Recovery Program, the migrant learning hub, the sped programs, and then of course Aurora with the sped distance learning program as well. Altogether, we have 811 students participating. So we have close to about 1,500 students participating for summer school so far. ACES, we have about 165 participating in that program. Next Monday, June 28th, the summer learning hubs will open at all summer program sites. Students in need of additional support will be enrolled. We are also in the process of working with the ACES, FRC, and migrant coordinators to establish learning hubs in the community for the following school year. There are currently 10 families from CHS participating in the CAVES Parent Learning Leadership Program. Our families will soon complete 12 intensive courses that cover various topics, including parent involvement, college access and scholarships, and leadership training. So we hope that these parents continue to use these new skills to influence other parents in our community to become involved and join us in our college access efforts. This opportunity was made possible by the CARPAC College Access Network. So as part of our transitioning plan, we've discussed it here at several board meetings and put it out in our newsletters, and we'll now put it out in flyers notifying our staff, our student, our community, that for the next school year, 2122 school year, we are transitioning to 100% in-person, five days a week, 100% model. Lastly, we wish everyone a restful summer. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, August 12th at 12:05 PM. Thank you.
So no meeting then, no meeting in, in July?
No scheduled board meeting in July, correct.
Okay. Thank you. That was K1, Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Superintendent Carlos Gonzalez, Board President, Ciro Calderon, Board members and attendees. My name is Yvette Hope, and I will be presenting on my role as Expanded Learning District Coordinator for Callexico Unified. The Expanded Learning Programs at Callexico Unified are funded by three sources: After-School Education and Safety, ACES-K8; 21st Century Community Learning Center; 21st Century After-School Safety and Enrichment for Teens, that's ASSETS. While each of these funding sources serve to bring in a total of 1.7 million in budget to provide human resource and programming, the Expanded Learning Department works collaboratively with Business Department to ensure that the grant funds are spent in accordance with California Ed Codes and Expanded Learning Laws and Policy, and that audit concerns are addressed and practices are modified. Through the Expanded Learning Funding Sources, COSD Sparks, a high-quality K-12 after-school program strives daily to support regular-day academics and students' social-emotional needs through fun and engaging opportunities to connect, achieve goals, develop creativity, and spark a passion for learning. In a normal school year, COSD Sparks employs approximately 80 tutors, 60 in ACES and 20 in ASSETS. The 2021 school year was unprecedented, as the pandemic affected staffing and student interests. Our staffing in ACES was at 33 and 10 in ASSETS. Although the, although the pandemic negatively affected student engagement during the regular school day, COSD Sparks stepped up to support regular school day learning with the implementation of an SEL literacy-based curriculum paired with fun and engaging STEM-related enrichment activities. ACES and ASSET staff are a community of young professionals who have a passion to serve, support, and help develop the youth of Callexico. For summer this year, we have a total of 15 ACES tutors with two site leads, one at Cesar Chavez and one at Enrique Camarena. For ASSETS, we have one tutor at both CH9 and Aurora, with a site lead that serves both sites twice a week. ACES summer runs from 12 to 3, Monday through Thursday, providing both an enrichment and academic component. We are serving both in-person and online. To address the effects of the pandemic on student literacy this year, our tutors are implementing Art for SEL. Students learn about different artists and apply their learning towards writing and illustrating their own book. In the end, students will receive a copy of their published book to share with family and school community. Just one way ACES is stepping up to support the development of literacy skills that are taught and assessed during the regular school day. ASSET Summer School is providing students with the opportunity of in-person learning with options of robotics at CH9, welding and culinary arts at the main campus, and even physical fitness at Aurora. Additionally, students have the option to take online driver's ed course and tutoring support to ensure that credits lost are recovered. In addition to interviewing and hiring staff, providing professional development, developing quality enrichment classes, and maintaining accountability, accountability through accurate and timely reporting, I support where there is a need. Sparks continues to partner with After-School Unlimited ASU as a grant partner. Other partners include CALSAK, California Age School Consortium, who provides Science Action Club, ICOE, who provides a space for collaborative meetings to get updates from CDE Partners, Fred Bugs and Nora Reed, and ASAP Connect, who provide tutors with professional development to build leadership capacity, which adds to the climate and culture of after-school programming. Expanded Learning COSD has exceeded the expectations during the pandemic and will continue to improve in quality of programming and customer service. Thank you.
Ms. Hope, right?
Yes.
I don't know if I missed it, but in your summer school program that you are thinking about offering, are you, can you offer something to do with the swimming pool, swimming, things like that?
We did not, we did not consider swimming as a part of it because of the CDC guidelines, the, the distancing protocol. We, we did not want to put the district at risk for liability. That's why we did not look at that option.
And you will see why I ask this question later throughout this meeting. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Gonzalez, and members of the community. My name is Maribel Paez, and I'm the Business Manager for Business Services Department. And our department consists of our Accounting Supervisor, Fabiola Calderon, two accountants, Vienna Rubio, Cesar Sanchez, or purchasing technician, Mayra Prestiado, or Accounting Assistance Three, that handle the payroll division, Sonia Redona, Erica Serrano, and Lorena Gastelum. We also have our Accounting Assistance Two, which handle our accounts payable division, Dora Rubio, Janer Villa Lobo, Seunice Benitez. And last but not least, we also have Giovanna Gil de Madrid. She is our Executive Assistant for Mr. Vega. So that is our staff. And our Business Department is actually responsible for budget development. Budget development, there is, for California Education Code, at least four times during the school fiscal year, we need to present a budget, we need to develop a budget and, and adopt it by, by the board. Our first, everything starts with our July 1st budget, an original budget that was presented on June 9. Along with that July 1st budget, we also have our estimated actuals, our current estimated actuals budget, and that is actually an analysis of, or a projection of how you're going to close your years, just an estimated amount of your revenues and expenditures based on the latest information you have. We also have our first interim budget report. Our first interim budget report is actually due by, on or before December 15. This report gives you an opportunity of not only reviewing and revising, adjusting any revenues and expenditures. For example, if you have any new local, state, or federal grants that the district is awarded, that's when you have to reflect and, and adjust your revenues. You also have to adjust your expenditures, if, for example, we, in the original budget, allocated a certain amount of vacancies, and by first interim, we know that those positions are not going to get filled, all those positions are going to have a much less allocation to fund for. So your first interim gives you an opportunity to review and revise your, your budget, along with analyzing all of your actual expenditures and revenues through October 31st. Then your second interim budget is due only before March 15. Your second interim is also one of the, an opportunity to review all of your revenues and expenditures. By this time, by this budget, you have your governor's proposed budget for the year. So you base your second interim budget on, on the latest assumptions that released by the governor on the January proposed budget. We also, after our, your July 1st budget, your first interim, your second interim budget, you also have your un-audited actuals budget. Your un-audited actuals budget needs to be presented before September 15, and that's the closing of your books. We have around two months. So for example, right now, we just, if it's adopted tonight, we have an original budget posted in our financial system. Then after that, we have to work on our un-audited actuals budget. And this process starts right before, in the middle of the, of the year, we're already starting to see what are the expenditures, your vendor requisitions, or purchase orders. We need to see which ones need to be canceled, which ones need to be carryover. You need to start planning for your prior reaccruals, your liabilities, everything that is going to be, we need to make sure that all those items that are received by 6/30, by June 30 of this year, belong in this year. Anything that is actually, all those purchase orders, or those materials and supplies that will not be arriving, then we need to carry those overs to the new fiscal year. So pretty much this, this, this month are very busy, always very busy in business, but this month, whenever we are closing a year, and we're starting a new year, it's not only you have to make sure you close all of your grants, you have to balance many accounts, all your state, local, and federal funds. You also have to make sure that you open up a new fiscal year. Why? Because starting July 1st, everyone needs a new budget on the system, because we start a new process, we start a new requisition, we have to pay bills, we need to move on. So actually, on this month, we do work on two systems. We work on our, on our 2021 current financial systems, and we also work on our 2122. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty challenged this month for, for the whole accounting staff. We also are responsible for all of our financials, our general ledger, our payroll, accounts payable, or accounts receivable, purchasing, asset management. For example, in payroll, this month was a, was another very busy month. Why? We had to pay all of our summer savings programs. We have to set up the new savings program for the new fiscal year. We have to make sure we pay all of our bilingual siphons, all of our any bonuses for people that is retiring. We have to also not only pay our, our regular payroll, but also our summer payroll. We're also looking into the excess on the liability of our vacations, so we're looking into those balances as well. So for the month of June and July payroll, it's pretty much very, very busy. This month, we, just to give you an estimate, we pay around 1,200 employees a month, 1,200 employees. employees, and this includes permanent, temporary subs, and this is, and this is around a girl starting of six million with a liability or like 3.2 on liability, meaning all of our benefits. That's pretty much, it's just an estimate for payroll. And our accounts payable, our average for payables is around 350 payments a week. And before you pay a bill, we are a government entity, we need to make sure 110% that that is something, the items have been received, all the proper documentation is being uploaded to our system, or all of our packing slips, everything needs to be accurately on our system before even submitting our payables to ICOE. So that's pretty much accounts payable. Accounts payable, right now, it's working all of our accruals, like I mentioned, our prior year accruals, our liabilities for next year. So they're reviewing all of those purchase orders that are open and requisitions. Accounts receivable, we also need to make sure that we deposit all the money that belongs to this year. We need to make sure that we recognize all of that revenue into these years. So we're working with our treasurer's office, with our ICOE, in making sure that all of our receivables get recognized in the correct year. Purchasing, I know we also working in all of our, updating all of our 2122 contracts. Asset management, we need to start working. We're gonna be pretty busy there also with the warehouse department, inventory, all of our inventory specialists, and balancing all of our inventory. We need to balance, we need to make sure this is part of the audit, to make sure that we have accurate inventory, all of our assets, all of our capital projects, our construction projects. So all of that needs to be balanced in order for us to close the year. Audit of financial statements, federal program monitoring, FPM review, or pre-audit. This one started in April 16, I believe. Yes, no, April 26. The week of April 26, we started with the pre-audit. The auditor has requested a lot, a lot of information. They requested our check registers, payroll information, our employees' data information, all of our grants, all of our awarded letters, all of our expenditures for our one-time funds, a lot of our, all of our instructional minutes, our weekly engagement rosters, attendance reports. So it's pretty much a long, long list of items that are reviewed under pre-audit, and this is before closing our books. Our final audit, after closing, this will be around the last week of September, after we actually adopt a, or adopt an unaudited actuals budget. That's when the auditors come and review our books, making sure that we properly have all of our expenditures, all of our revenues, and we did everything that needs to be done before closing. Grant reporting, cash monitoring, construction administration, we also, we need to make sure, there's a lot of reporting that needs to be done with all of our federal grants, or title, or Title I, or Title IV, Title V, or after-school programs. So there is a lot of monthly, quarterly, and annual reports that need to be done as the same way as, we need to reconcile all of our monthly revenues, and we also support with the organization of all the construction committees and monitoring reporting expenditures for all the measure V, now our measure Q. End of the year closing, again, like I mentioned, we just have to start that process. We need to make sure all those final year-end, year-end entries are done, and all the reconciliations of all of our bank accounts, ASB accounts. So it's, it's a very intense process to close the books of a school in a school year, as there's so many things that you have to make sure that you do before, before properly closing the books. And I just wanna take this opportunity to really thank my staff because they do an amazing job. This year has been, for everyone, has been a very difficult year, everything that we went through, and everyone got paid, all of our vendors got paid, and I'm just amazed of all the work they did, and despite of everything that we were going through, myself included, everything got done, so I'm really, really proud of them. And that's all. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Excellent report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Food Services?
Good evening. My name is Gilbert Venegas. I'm the Director of Food Services. And main focus for my department is improving student meal quality. During the, the first thing I did, you know, coming in, I did surveys to get feedback from students. Biz complaints, cold food, too much processed food. So immediately made changes to our menu. We added more scratch cooking. We had a lot of fresh fruit and vegetable salad bars, vegetable salad bars. We added a lot of grab-and-go items, a lot more variety. And also, we, a lot of the items that we used to sell, we started to implement it and incorporate into the reimbursable meals, so nobody would be left out. We also started collaborating with Imperial Valley Schools. We joined their co-op, and we started finding out what works at each other's schools. We started sharing recipes and improving, you know, each other's meal service. Another of our focus is to improve the access to meals. You know, one of the first things, you know, we looked at not only the quality and that we're offering, but how long does it take for a student to get a meal? We had low numbers at the high school, we had low numbers at the junior high schools, and that was because the lines were long, so we added additional points of service. Points of service are different areas where students can get additional meals, you know, the different options. And so we added, especially at the high school, a lot of points of service. It was an open campus back then, but we doubled our participation there. Our numbers, once they closed, we added even further points of service and more variety, and we doubled again. We had the highest reimbursement rate or participation rate at the high school, higher than any of our school sites, elementary's over 80%. It was higher than anywhere in the valley. How do I know that? Because we're part of the Imperial Valley Co-op, and we shared that information. Also, more ways that we improved access to meals is during the closure, we started participating under a seamless summer option. That allowed us to do drive-through and walk-up service. It was necessary to participate in SSO, seamless summer option, to be compliant while operating distance learning. It's the only meal service approved to run with waivers, allowing us to do non-congregate feeding, allowing parents or guardians to pick up meals for all children 18 and under, and waived meal service, time restrictions. We also started doing home deliveries for those students that didn't have somebody to bring food home for them. And we also started assisting, you know, the FRC coordinates, what used to be called a back-to-school, backpack program, I mean. And so we pick up foods from the Imperial Valley Food Bank, we deliver them to the school sites, and they provide a weekend meal kit so that those students that really have a need have something to eat at home over the weekends. Another focus is to improve working conditions for our employees. We've spent a lot of money to buy equipment, but we also, you know, always provided personal protective equipment, pre-pandemic and during pandemic, pretty much anything they need, anything they want, we've gotten. And what else have we done? We added over 95 hours, and over the last six years, we've added over 95 hours of additional labor. Forty of those hours were in 12 new positions created in our department, and 55 of those hours were from 44 people getting additional hours. How we're able to do this is, even though we were serving the same amount of meals, about 1,000, 1,100,000 lunches each year, and about a combined 250,000 meals in the form of breakfast and supper, even though it's been on average the same total of meals, our numbers have more than doubled as far as reimbursement. We've gone from $3,880,000 budget to $7,400,000 over that six-year period, and that's because we were early adopters for the community eligibility provision. CP is a way that we can, you know, increase our reimbursement rate. We've done so progressively throughout the years. We're now, we're at 100%. Every meal we serve, every day of the year we serve, it's 100% free, you know, the max though that they give us per meal. And that also helped during the pandemic. Every child that goes to Callexico Unified School District qualified for the pandemic EBT. So what happened is the government, California, sent out PBT cards that were, you know, that had cash in them for them to be able to buy groceries with a PBT card, and then it was reloaded, I believe, up to three or four times. So that, every single one of our students qualified because we're a CP school. What else have we done with, you know, well, the other focus is managing, you know, expenditures. We can't hoard the money, we can't hide it, we can't save it, we gotta spend it. So not only have we, like I mentioned, we've spent on, you know, on our staff, but we also spent over $1,300,000 in equipment, you know, new freezers, new refrigerators, new ovens, new till skillets, new trucks, new vehicles, you know, everything for them so that they can do the wonderful things that they do throughout our district. But we also reinvested in the foods that we give to our, the foods that we give to our students. We buy the highest-quality produce, the highest-quality beef, the highest-quality dairy, and that's, we use the same vendors from a local, you know, distributor, produce distributor, to vendor that, various vendors that, you know, pretty much the majority of our, of our local grocers, our local restaurants, we use the same, the same people. So we reinvested on the students. And, I mean, that's it.
Thank you. Excellent report.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Venegas. Thank you for your report. Okay. That was Food Services. Now, next, the migrant program. It says migrant program. Huh? Oh. I got, I got migrant here.
Good evening, Trustees, Mr. Gonzalez and the community. I've actually had the pleasure of introducing my program to you at the past two board meetings, well, actually, in the months of May and April. And so I'm really excited today to go over what we are doing right now for the summer. I included some pictures there so that you can see that our students are cooking, and they love it. They've made French toast, and they've made Jell-O, and they've made different things. We are cooking with students kinder through eighth grade, and it's the first time we've ever done this. Next week, we're calling it the Eggstravaganza because we have about 180 eggs that we're going to use for different things, scrambled eggs, and just different activities that they're having, and they love it, so much so that we're getting calls from migrant parents wanting to now enroll their students in the migrant program for summer. So it's very exciting for us. I just wanted to share that with you. We, at the very top, we have our Coordinator, Mr. Stone, and our two mini-core students. I wanted you to see that we do have two mini-core students that are with us during the summer. We actually have three. We have a new one, and she's working with us in the elementary. During the school year, and actually during the summer as well, we have the Migrant Family Literacy Program. That's our preschool program. Right now, we're servicing four parents and their students, and they are offered a course on parenting, as well as how to help their child with preschool skills. And it's going very well. It goes very well during the year, and right now, we have the program as well. We have, during the year, the Migrant Expanded Learning Program. We service first through 10th grade students with a focus of language arts, math, and cultural component, as well as the speech and debate team. And this year, we only had a speech team. We did not have a debate team, and that was because that service was delayed for the following year, and that was due to COVID safety protocols. And then we have the same thing during the summer session somewhat. We focus on ELA and math, and we also focus this year on cultural component, and that part is the cooking. And so, for example, we will be making tortillas, we will be making different nationality, well, national dishes here and there, and we're still discussing, so we have four more weeks to go. We also have the Migrant Credit Recovery and the College and Career and Case Management Program. That's ninth through 12th grade. That's during the year, but during the summer, we also employed case management, and that's how we are working with our students from ninth through 12th grade that did not graduate or had difficulty graduating. We tried something new. We tried migrant learning hub, and we're actually, that's the first time we've done this. We have three teachers. We have a language arts teacher, a math teacher, and a science teacher, and they are doing credit recovery in the evening. So we're concentrating on students that want an additional course. So they take two courses during the day with the summer program, and now in the evening, they take an additional course of whatever it is that they may need help with to recover their credits in either math, language arts, or science. And it's going very well. Every day, we're getting more and more students that are interested, and they need the help. So that's, that's being successful, and that's the model that we hope to use next year with the community learning hubs. And so that's what we're working with closely with ACES, and we're working closely with the FRC, with Mrs. Armandadis and Mrs. Hope. So that's very exciting for us. Out-of-school youth, that's a program for students that usually drop out of school or in 12th grade, and that also includes the Work-Study Program. That program was put on hold this year, again, because of COVID pandemic safety issues. So that was not in place this year, but it will be in place the following year. It's already in our district service agreement, so that is definitely going to be in place next year. The Work-Study Program focuses on students who have a 2.5 GPA and below, not a high GPA, a lower GPA, and it's used as a motivator to show students different, just different types of careers that are out there, different colleges that they can go to. Also, we take field trips, we go to technical schools, we go to different universities, we expose them to the colleges here, we expose them to different universities in San Diego close by. And, and next, well, we wanted to do it this year, it wasn't allowed because of COVID again, but next year, we want to take them to the technical schools, we want to take them to the barber shops. There's a new barber shop, beautician school here that's coming up in El Centro. So we wanna take them to different businesses as well, and have them hopefully have like an internship with these different entities, and hopefully to work with just different college and universities as well, especially San Diego State. And then lastly, we have, no, yes, we have the migrant, the, ah, I can't even speak anymore, the Migrant Parent Advisory Committee. That is our leadership committee, and most of our parents are very involved with any kind of district committee as well. So it's, it's an area that they feel safe, it's an area where they become involved, they learn leadership, they learn skills on how to go to schools and work with the administration and the teachers. And, and we always make sure that they attend our parenting courses, whatever it may be. Quite a few of them are part of the Cabe, courses that are taking place now. Quite a few also participated in Pique, and quite a few have participated in the Sure Help Line. And so that's very exciting, too. And lastly, we provide health, dental vision, and mental health services to our migrant students, not the parents, but to the students. So that's where we're at, at this point, and that will continue the following year. Do we have any questions?
Thank you. Wonderful report.
Thank you.
Well, the question is?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to offer some sort of a summer school program where you take your kids to the pool?
I want to. I have discussed this with, but I'm waiting, I'm waiting. I saw that it was flown. I would love to take them to the pool. In fact, but I still had to wait until July, but I wanted to take our students, I still haven't figured it out, but I wanted to take them to see San Diego State, aside from the pool, to San Diego State and Old Town, because it was close by, it's outside, and I thought that would be great to take them to a field trip, but we're still working on it. And then to also have a pool day. And so we actually have a sponsor that will sponsor pizzas for us for that pool day, but that's for migrant. But of course, that, that's still in the plans, that's still in the plan. So that's where we're at right now, but I'm really excited. If you ever want to come and see when we're cooking, I can let you know. You're welcome to come and see us. Like I said, we, all of our teachers were given a, like, what do they call, nosonesstufas, they're, the cooking, hot plates, thank you, the hot plates, hot plates. They were provided with pots and pans, mixing spoons, everything that they need, and then I'm the one that's going grocery shopping. That is interesting. That's fun. That's fun. But it's something new. It's motivating to the students. I wanted to do something that would motivate them. I have wonderful staff this year, wonderful staff for the summer. They took on the challenge of cooking, and now they're, they're really seeing how excited everyone is. So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Ms. Moon.
Thank you.
That was the migrant program. Now, maintenance and operations.
Good afternoon, members of the board, community, everyone in attendance. Cesar Vega, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, and I am thrilled to present this, no, to present this topic, a topic that I am not going to be presenting because I have a highly decorated 20-year Navy officer, honorable discharge, Callejican family man that will be presenting that to you. Our new executive director of facilities, Mr. Daniel Campo, is all yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Daniel Campo, the new executive director for maintenance, operations, and transportation, will be presenting maintenance and operations. The first thing we'll begin to do in, after I've, we do have a staff of 22 people year round. In the summer, we do gain more staff from all the sites because everybody goes on vacation. So that is a total of 51 personnel that are added to my staff during the summer. And with, the, the list that you see above was after I visited all the campuses already, all the sites, and talked to some of the principals, actually, all the principals, and we came up with a list for the summer projects. We're going to be cleaning up the high school grounds along Highway 98, which is all the north side, from the, from the old teacher parking lot all the way to the FFA compound. All that's going to be cleaned out before the end of the summer, and then we're going to turn it back over to the school, to the site for maintenance after that. We are in the process of summer deep cleaning program district-wide. It's not as intense as previous years because the schools weren't used as much this year. So we're just doing touch-ups here and there and, and making sure that the classrooms are ready to go in August. The next thing is all sites. We, we will be assisting all the sites in returning the furniture from the, from storage to the classroom for 100% in class, in class presentation in August. That is going to take a lot of time for my staff, and we will be providing services and assistance to all the sites to be, we'll coordinate with the sites to make sure that it happens, and they're ready to go in August. Another thing that was brought up with one of the principals, we are painting the Kennedy Gardens Elementary main building. That will be painted this year by the end of the summer. The next thing on there is, there was some existing issues with the Varner gym lighting, and we will be fixing them. If you go up there, if you go and see them, some of the lights are off. That was more of a, of a technical issue, and we're going to be able to fix that. The concrete at CHS 9 will be done after summer school is over, so it doesn't impede or, or the kids aren't playing around with, you know, the cement and stuff like that. The next thing would be the painting of the dual elementary trailer painting. We will complete that this summer, and our COVID projects still in progress, all of them. We're still about 60% have, complete with them, but we are working on them due to urgency. And I would like to thank my staff because a lot of the, a lot of the times, they're out in the heat, 120 degrees, and I just want to thank them for the service. Thank you.
Thank you for the wonderful report.
Thank you, Mr. Campo. One quick question that I have for you.
Yes.
You guys are going to clean up the side of 98. I know it was something that was mentioned before. Can we put something up, like, we just buy some type of, like?
Yes. I've already contacted Valley Fence, and we are going to get a quote on, to put a privacy like we did at William, and that should cover that. I'm already aware of it.
Yeah, perfect. I think that's the only thing, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was maintenance and operations. Next is the Personnel Commission.
Good evening, Superintendent Gonzalez, Board of Trustees, Callejico Community, and everyone present here. My name is Esther Martinez. I am presenting on the Personnel Commission. So the Personnel Commission is an independent governing body voted in by CSA Chapter Number 399 to administer various areas of the Classified Personnel Service, such as recruitments, examinations, interviews, et cetera. An election was held on December 12, 1997, and CSA Chapter Number 399 voted to reinstate the Personnel Commission. On January 12, 1998, the Board of Education was presented with a motion to approve the petition and unanimously voted it in. I work for the Personnel Commission, and the commissioners are my direct supervisors. The principles on how to administer a merit system are pursuant to Education Code 45240 through 45320. These ed codes were enacted to eliminate the corruption of filling jobs back in the 1965 for LA Unified School District, where employment and jobs promotions were being given as a reward for having voted for elected officials. I am responsible to ensure and administer the rules and regulations that are linked to the ed codes, ed codes I just mentioned. I also oversee the classified recruitment through a competitive examination process, ensuring fairness, encouraging the retention and promotion of classified employees. For you, the district, what this means, the principle is that the applicants that move forward to an interview panel have been screened and have proven themselves to be highly qualified applicants for the position, therefore being great applicants for the school district. For employees, this principle is also very important because they, it means that they work alongside their colleagues, which have also went through the same competitive process, and it brings, it's not about who you know, but it's because they earned it. They merited it. They competed for it, and they met the minimum requirements. For student and parents, this principle is important because they can rest assure that their students are being assisted by highly qualified employees who have proven themselves to meet all the requirements. For the community, this principle is important because having individuals in place in the educational setting who are qualified to do the job is crucial in producing well-educated students, which benefits all the community. We also recruit for positions that are not part of the classified service, such as crossing guards, the after-school programs, AVID among some of them. Those positions are exempt from the competitive examination process because they're short-term temporary. I am also responsible for maintaining a classification plan and conduct job audits as necessary. Oftentimes, those result in reclassifications. The Personnel Commission has the authority to conduct appeal hearings on disciplinary actions taken by you, the governing board, on anything that's disciplinary or on exam protests. I am responsible for coordinating those hearings. There's a lot more that we do, but I was told we only had a brief time. I too want to thank my staff who helps me every single day keep the accountability for our office. So I don't know if you have any questions?
Excellent report. Thank you very much.
How many, thank you, thank you for the, how many people work at the Personnel Commission?
Four, including myself.
Four or 40?
Four.
Oh, four, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That maintenance personnel, that was the Personnel Commission. Next, state and federal projects.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and community present. My name is Berisha Wartaprius. I'm the Director of State and Federal Projects for Callejico Unified. And one of the main functions of my office, which consists of two people, which is Phyllis Salazar, who has been in the office for over 20 years, and myself, we also count Cesar Vega, I'm sorry, Cesar Sanchez, part of the Business Department as part of our team. But Mr. Vega is part of my team because one of the unique things about my position is that I am part of the Ed Services Team, but a big part of my office also lives in the Business Office. And so we're constantly collaborating, checking with them, and so I've included Cesar Sanchez there. He is a categorical accountant, and all federal, state grants, local grants, you know, he assists with reporting. He makes sure that what is spent is reported, but those always go through my office as well to make sure that the narratives and the additional justification for the expenses are accurate. My office really is, is in charge of all accountability and compliance for state and federal programs, which includes federal program monitoring. So every two years, our district has the privilege of being monitored by the state. You know, it's either onsite or online. We just finished a review in May of last year, and so we are scheduled to have an online review in November of this year. Again, part of that is, Callejico receives large amounts of categorical programs, and there have been past findings, and so they are constantly, we are favorites of CDE, and they're constantly here. Another function of my office is we provide equitable services. So as part of the federal grants that go through our office, we have to ensure that the private schools in our community have their share of those federal grants. So the three local private schools, Olga, Vincent, and Mission School do participate in Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Mission only participates with Title II and Title III, and you'll see some of these items on the agenda for approval a little later on. Another function of our office, we apply for these federal grants. So the consolidated, consolidated application is submitted. Currently, we're working on it to make sure that we apply for these programs, and then we report on these programs. There are two reporting periods and application periods. Any data collections required by CDE also go through our office, such as the civil rights data collection, the CBEDs, or the California Basic Education Data Systems. They come through our office. We also, because we, we oversee Title I, which is one of our biggest categorical programs, I provide assistant and supporter administrators, making sure that the funds are spent as they're supposed to, making sure we provide guidance in terms of how to spend it, what is allowable, what it isn't. There, there are SPSAs, which are also on the agenda later on. We provide guidance. Several of the other programs, such as Title III, which are English Language Learners Support, our migrant program, our after-school programs, those grants are also overseen by my office. So I provide guidance, support, you know, I'm a thought partner for the coordinators that oversee those programs, just to make sure that they're in compliance and coordination. As you can see, there are several programs there. One of the other big programs that I kind of oversee several grants on is our Career Technical Education. So for that, we have federal Perkins money, but we also have CTEIG, Strong Workforce, Specialized Secondary Program, as well as the Ag Incentive Grant for CTE. And of course, there's other duties that's assigned, so if there's a need, you know, I'm always available to assist, such as the case with social-emotional learning. Kind of in the mix right now is independent study and virtual programs and looking at those opportunities. And I do play a big role in professional development, whether it's providing it or providing, looking for ways to fund those, those opportunities and looking for funding. One of the main functions I see of my office is really, if there is a need in the district, then I look for funding to make sure that that need is followed through. For example, just earlier in the week, Ortiz said, I have this need for my foster students. What can I do? And so Mrs. Hope, Mrs. Limon, Mrs. Armandadis, and I, we sat together, we brainstormed, we came up with a solution. We have a learning hub starting on Monday. So really, whatever the need is in the district, it is my duty to find funding for it and make sure it's carried through and make sure that we are in compliance with all state and federal requirements. Any questions?
Thank you. Excellent report.
Congratulations. Do we have our own grant writer?
You're looking at her. You are looking at her, but in addition, I don't work alone. I have the privilege of working very closely with a team, so whether it's Mrs. Ramírez, the curriculum team, Mrs. Yáñez for English Learners, Mrs. Limon, you know, when I was the after-school coordinator, I wrote those grants myself, so it's a, it's a team effort.
Good question. I was going to ask about the pool, but that's later. Do you work closely with ICOE when it comes to not managing, because you're doing that job, but to call out and bring grants to the district?
Not necessarily with ICOE, but I am always on the lookout for grants that are available. You know, looking at School Services of California, they, they send out those funding opportunities. Mr. Vega has sent grants to me. I know I've received grant offers from Mr. Venegas as well, things that are out there in the community. Sometimes, we kind of have to take a look at what is, you know, how much we would be getting for a grant versus the cost. And the, I think, one of the things I, I think I'm really good at is, you know, I don't want to duplicate the work, but I also know the requirements of all the grants that we have, so I'm trying to figure out, how can we do that particular issue with, or, or project without getting additional funding that's just going to cause more work, more requirements, and just put a burden on more people, which is kind of, we're, we're a little overwhelmed. Yeah. And the pool, I already did talk to Ms. Hope about, you know what, for next year, thinking about, we, in, in, because I'm familiar with assets, we could look into a lifeguard certification program, so where we can work with our high school students to teach them the basics from swimming, and then hopefully get them through a lifeguarding certification program through assets. But that's going to take some time because one of the requirements for ACES, it has to be available to all, and we need to meet the kids where they're at. So if they don't know how to swim and they want to become a lifeguard, we got to start with the swimming lessons. So, but yeah, we got it.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Well, 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 everybody's going to have to go through you. See, that's the thing. They have to go through you. Do you have a lifeguard?
I have an operator.
Really? Okay. Then I'm serious. So that's two. That, that's, that's two.
One.
No, but it's one and then one. Otta's the only one? Oh, okay. Thank you anyways. Thank you. Okay, so that's it for K2. K3 Association comments, CSA or NACT, if anything? Okay, here we go.
Good evening, board and superintendent and audience. Can I make a recommendation next time you move the CAC comment up? Because we, I had to wait for how many presidents, one, two, three, four, five, six? Thank you. I want to address the comment made about the merit system not working during Tuesday's special meeting. I want to tell you that merit system does work. In 1989, that was the year I was hired, 32 years ago, Callejico, CSA Chapter 399 reinstated the merit system because we wanted a fair recruitment, we wanted examination to be given out correctly, we wanted to make sure that the top three ranks were interviewed and that those three ranks, those three ranks were interviewed, came out from the current eligibility list. This was done to protect us from boards appointing whoever they wanted. Voting a, voting a merit system guarantees our membership that they will have the first opportunity to promote from within, that is, that we want. Only if there's not a unit member interested in that position being recruited for, then the people from the outside can be interviewed. The Personnel- The personal commission does not show favoritism in hiring. You know who? Because the personal commission does not hire. The interview panel that works for the school district is the one that makes the recommendation, and you, the governing board, approves that person hired gets paid. The person who talked about sex and age discrimination, in reviewing the unemployment reports that you have approved for this year, twenty-three females were hired or got promotion. Twenty-one men also. Where's the discrimination that she was talking about? She also said that the commission included relatives of school board members. That is not true, but even if it was, as long as the people do not live in the same house, it is allowed. We had a board member married to an employee, and currently, we have a board member that has sister that works here. What's wrong with that? The person said the personal commission have flaws and many serious issues. I'm here to tell you that the personal commission does, is not flawed, and if other neighborhood districts don't have it, maybe they should, because they're missing out. The classified service stands by the merit system because we have seen how our own brothers and sisters are promoting to a better position that they were applying for. We trust our director and all the staff under the supervision. If we ever have any questions, answers are always given and explained. We have no concerns, and we fully support the merit system. I invite you to attend a merit system and committee or conference so you can learn the importance of it. A matter of fact, today at four o'clock, I finished my merit academy, I went through eight sessions, four hours long, and today I completed, and I'm proud of it. Also, I wanted to speak, I heard a lot that the race, no races, no nothing, okay, fine. What have you given us, the classified employees for the COVID, they were there in the first front line. What did they get? They didn't get nothing, and we still haven't gotten anything. That lawyer that you have, oh yeah, we met with him, he, we got, okay, he said before we leave, let's schedule the meetings, you know, so we can be updated. Well, guess what, he did the same thing to us as a teacher, he canceled two meetings. And now we have to wait and see when the next meeting is gonna be. Are we gonna wait another two years to finish our contract, to complete it? That money belongs to us, to the classified, to the teachers. You don't need a lawyer, you need an administrator that can do the work and knows, but you're wasting, you're gonna be wasting a lot of money with the lawyer. He doesn't even come with a laptop, he doesn't have a pen, he doesn't have paper. Great, how are we gonna be able to get this done? So I heard you, you know, take a look at your lawyers that you're gonna be hiring for negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was CSCE, ACT. No ACT. Item K4, ROP Committee. Mr. Calderón Jr. is usually the one that does a report on that. There's no report tonight. Item K5, Accounts Payable Pre-List.
I just have two questions in regards to that. I think I made it a couple meetings ago in regards to Home Depot. Says 500, there was a, there was a charge there for over like $1,200, there's nothing itemized on it, nothing at all. And then another one was the contract, we have a contract with Vicks Air Conditioning, correct? And I was looking at it in Arctic Air, we paid them in June also as well, is he coming out also as well? I'm, it's just questions, do we have a contract with Arctic Air also as well?
No, we don't have a contract with Arctic Air. If there were any charges in the pre-list, it probably was from past.
It says June, they're showing for June, June like 10th or something like that.
But they're older, they're older invoices that came in, they're not for recent services.
So they're older?
Yes, they're older invoices for Arctic Air. And then you also had an inquiry on the Home Depot? So the Home Depot, the way we work Home Depot is through a blanket PO, and it's stored over at Home Depot, so MNO guys can go to Home Depot and purchase items through the purchase order, through the blanket purchase order. And the language that says not to exceed 500 is that the internal rule that we have at the district is that no one single item can cost more than $500 to pay through the blanket PO. If they need to purchase an item that costs more than $500, they need to do a separate, unique purchase order for that purchase.
Correct, yeah, 'cause I seen, there was a bunch of them, there's some for like a dollar something, there's some for like $12 or something, then there's a...
Right, so the payment that you see there will be for combined items.
All right, yeah, and the last time I just said, just go ahead and just put something on there, remember I told you guys, just like, something where we could see, this is what was purchased, 'cause there's nothing on there showing anything that was purchased, or there's nothing at all. At least the other ones show screws or whatever it was, this one is just says straight, like, you know, that's what we're paying for. I'm not questioning it, it's just for clarification, that's pretty much it.
Right, that's how we work Home Depot.
Thank you, that was K5, Pre-List. K6, Board Reports, these are informational reports by board members, no action is taken. Mr. Romero?
Once again, I'd like to thank all the staff, the teachers, the classified, district office, you guys are doing an awesome job. It's been a tough year, and hopefully, we'll move to normalcy in the next couple months. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Romero, Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, I just wanna congratulate, once again, Camilo Garcia and Ethan Noriega. Made an accomplishment that not anybody could talk about, that's something that I think is a reflection on the parents also as well, 'cause it takes commitment from both of them. Another thing I wanna say is, I just wanna, you know, thank our classified or certified employees for everything that they're doing, our administrators for everything that you guys are doing also as well. You guys are doing an excellent job. Just, just to wrap up what was said here today during open session and stuff like that, it's something that doesn't go on deaf ears, it's something that, at least for myself, I could speak of, and I know some of the other board members also as well. But you know what, we're here for our students, that's what we're here for. We can't forget that. Somebody said vision, we need vision. I think there's a lot of vision here in our school district. Our thing was said, passion and determination. I think we have passion and determination to be up here, you guys presenting yourself and being here every night, being here late. We saw that with the classified employees, with certified employees, you know, working during this pandemic. Actions, actions was talked a lot, one of the big things that was talked a lot about today was trust, and there has to be trust. If there's not trust, then everything's lost. And that's one of those things that I just wanna say is that, you know what, what was said doesn't go on deaf ears, and it's something that we are working on, we hopefully to come, you know, and, and pretty much come to an agreement to go ahead and service our students and give them the best education possible. I've said it before, and I've said this numerous times, you guys can go back and see the videos. I hold Callexico at a high, you know, level, high standard. I did not graduate from Callexico, I graduated from Holville, but I saw a lot of good teachers lost out of Holville that came over here to Callexico. And that's one of those things that I see, Callexico being the pinnacle of the educational system, and I said this numerous times, and I wanna see that. And my daughter is going through the system, my oldest daughter graduated from the system, and my little one, I want her to graduate from here. And it's something that I have a lot of passion about, and that's the reason why I'm up here. And I just, other than that, I just wanna say thank you, enjoy your guys' summer, be safe out there, and enjoy your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. And for myself, I wanna, I want to start by saying thank you to everybody for this last school year, it seems, and I wanna, I don't wanna jinx it, but it seems like we made it. So in a couple of days, we will jump into the next school year. So thanks, everybody, from, from Mr. Gonzales, down to the day one worker as of today, because everybody's, I've said it before, and I will say it again, everybody is equally important in this, in this district. There's nobody more important than another one. So we have summer school going on, and if I keep mentioning the pool, it's because we're gonna talk about that, and that's something that I'm, I'm really interested in, and I wanna make it, I wanna make it, make it happen, but it's not gonna just take the three of us or the five of us, it's gonna take everybody here in this room, I believe. And going back to what my colleagues have said, everybody's welcome to come to the board meetings and express their feelings and express their, their comments, say comments about us, whether they're positive or negative. We are elected officials, we are here to make sure that your voice is heard, and I personally guarantee you that if, that if you come here, and if you have a comment, regardless of whether it's positive or negative, I will fight for your right to be here and to be heard. So that is a guarantee that I, that I can give you, that not only myself, but this board will make, will make sure that it happens. Everybody has a voice, everybody has a right to be heard, and everybody has a right to make sure that what they have to say is heard and is taken to the proper, through the proper channels. And now is the time to talk about the pool. Yes, Item L, Discuss and Possible Action. L1, Agreement Between Callexico Unified District and Heffernan Memorial Healthcare District for the Funding of the 2021 Summer's Pool Recreation Program. Finally. Mr. Gonzales?
So, little update, we put this as a placeholder, and the reason we put it as a placeholder is we were hoping to bring an MOU to the board. We had discussed the process of how the pool works, and it's a three-agency, really, commitment that takes place, and that's why we have an MOU. It's the city, and Mr. Vega and myself met with Mr. Miguel Figueroa, Mr. Camilo Garcia, they were very interested, very excited, so they were very interested in moving forward in regards to the MOU. I know the board, there was an interest to move forward as well. The third piece, which is the funding component, is the one that was the piece that we were waiting for, and unfortunately, there was a meeting that was held, I believe, yesterday, and in regards to the funding, the Heffernan Memorial Health District, they will not be able to fund this year for the pool. And so that is the reason that you don't see an MOU, we're not bringing an MOU for, for approval, for that same reason, because it is a three-part agency team in order to get it done. So that is our update at this point. If the board wants to discuss it, then we can discuss it.
Can the city put any financial assistance? Or will they put any financial assistance?
Right, and so when we met with the city, Mr. Vega and myself, the city's position at this point was that they could not fund it, they did not have the funding for it. They are hoping that for next year, it'll be a better year, but at this point, they could not commit to funding the pool.
I think I heard the IID, Javier Gonzales stating something about a Dippy Duck program, that they were gonna go ahead and see if they're gonna divvy up, I guess, to the three cities, which is Browley, Alcentro, and Callexico, but that's only, I guess, if we had this summer program. And that's one of those things, I don't know if anybody's reached out to him or anything at all to see what he has to say.
Yeah, so they did reach out to us, and it's $2,000 that they can...
Oh, it's $2,000?
Donate, $2,000, yeah.
I thought it was gonna be more than that.
I know.
So at this point then, no summer school, I mean, no summer pool program?
Right, so we were trying to be proactive as well. One of the things that we mentioned to the board, and I think Ms. Calderón, Fabiola mentioned it, a lot of when we opened the pool, we do it with enough time and anticipation, right? We started around March, and we post the positions, we look for the lifeguards, we train the lifeguards, we hire a pool manager, for example, to help coordinate, do the scheduling. We did move forward and post the position to see if there was an interest, and we did that last week, for both pool manager and for lifeguards. So we don't have a pool manager, and we have one lifeguard that we've been able to, who has been able to qualify. And so that's what we're looking at right now. I mean, the posting is still up, if I'm not mistaken, and so we're, you know, keeping our fingers crossed, right? And if there's more that apply, then we have them ready. In regards to our own programs, for example, for Callexico High School, if our students in P want to use the pool, they can use the pool, it's open for our students, right? Especially now that we have a lifeguard, that'll be nice, because we can do that. If ACES, Assets, in any way, want to offer anything at this point, we do have a lifeguard that would be available, so that's good. I mean, we can service our own students at this point. But even one lifeguard, one of the things that we were looking at, and Dr. Thurman, was looking into, in regards to how many students we can have per lifeguard, so that varies between 20 and 50. Back in 2019, it was 50, what we were informed from the Red Cross, Dr. Thurman was looking at it most recently, and I think it was 20 per lifeguard. So those are things that we need to take into consideration as well.
And I was seeing the Callexico High School football team's been taking advantage of it. So that's, that's a great thing to see, hopefully, they do take advantage of it, you know, it's great conditioning for them also as well, so...
Yeah, any of our students, in regards to our programs, for example, our swim team, they all have access to it. One of the things that we were even talking about, if we are able to get more lifeguards for our summer school students, we could even do like a field trip to the pool, right? I think it would be fun, a good incentive, different grade levels going in, like we usually do at the end of every school year, which by that time, we do have lifeguards already, so that's why we're able to provide those field trips at the end of the school year, but maybe we could provide it for our summer school students that were able to get enough lifeguards this year.
So at this point, so since there's no help from either the city or Heffernan, we will not be able to provide a citywide pool program for the community?
That is correct, and I know that Mr. Vega talked to Mr. Tomas Virgim as well, so I know that there's an interest with time to discuss it and be able to put the funding to the side. Now, of course, like we mentioned, we also are hopeful that the city will be in a better position next year, and maybe by next summer, they will be able to, to open the pool on their own, really without the district or the Heffernan Memorial District. But if they aren't able to on their own due to funding, maybe we can have that conversation early on with the Heffernan Board, and like I said, the city was very much willing to in regards to doing the management and administration that they've done in the past. However, when it came to the funding for it, that's where we just weren't able to move forward with it.
Okay. So I guess at this point, we'll just wait and see what happens with the lifeguard situation, and, and hopefully, we can have at least a program for our summer school students.
Correct.
The last thing we need is have an accident, and that was, that's why I was so, I am so interested in making sure that this program happens, at least for our students, so hopefully, we can make something happen, and it's not, I know it's not gonna be on you or the district, but it's going to depend on external factors in this case, so, okay. Board, anything else on this item? Thank you. So that was L1, but there's no, there's only discussion, there's no action to, there's no action to approve. Okay, Item M, action items, consideration and actual approval of the following items. M1, Agreement Between Callexico Unified School District and Dixon Smart Schoolhouse to provide services related to the use of the federal ESER funds for district facility projects.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Out of the Senate, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M2, Agreement Between Callexico Unified School District and Remind for Mass Notification Services for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Out of the Senate, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M3, Agreement Between Callexico Unified School District and Curriculum Associates to Provide IRADAS as a Dynastic Tool for ELA and Math for 2021, 2022 school year.
So move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Romero?
All second.
Second by Mr. Second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M4 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Lexi Pool for Police One Academy Training Platform Elementary Manager Program for CT Law Enforcement Pathway at Calexico High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M5 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and OmniPrint International Incorporated to provide onsite gra- garment printer training for CT teacher at Calexico High School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M6 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and MCF Consulting Incorporated for the Medical Administrative Activity Services from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
So move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M7 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Practical Incorporated for LEA Building Option Services from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, uh, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M8 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Medic First to conduct CPR first aid AED training for staff members between July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Sec- first, uh, motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. That was M8. M9 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and the Orange County Office of Education for School-Based Medical Administrative Activities SMAA, participant from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Second, uh, motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M10 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Imperial County Office of, of Education for Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, PBI, as training for Jefferson Elementary School Teachers.
Move to approve.
All second.
Say, uh, motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M11 agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Framlin Covey Client Sales Incorporated for the renewal of the annual school membership for Jefferson Elementary School.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M12 agreement between, between Calexico Unified School District and Holland Dairy Incorporated for dairy and milk products as part of the Imperial County School Food Services Cooperative.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes 3-0. M13 lease agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Imperial County Office of Education for the Use of Former Family Resource Center Model Unit Located at Main Saleman School, Little Bulldog Child Development Center.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Romero.
So, second with comment?
Second by Mr. Alvarado with comments.
Just, I just wanna see, uh, they're gonna be utilizing it for?
For an early child development program?
Yeah. So this is part of the ICOE, Imperial County Office of Education, the preschool, uh, early childhood. So what they're hoping to have is the old FRC, which is over where, by 98?
Yeah, correct, by mains.
Uh, what ICOE is going to do is they're gonna come in and they're gonna basically re-modernize the whole, uh, facility. And they're gonna provide services which are much needed specifically for that side of, uh, of Calexico. Not only that, uh, they're also going to house, um, uh, infants as well. So it also is going to help, uh, our community because it's serving our students. The other thing it's going to also assist with, for example, is, uh, if we have, um, teen pregnancies and we have students that have, uh, babies, we'll be able to use that facility to also house, you know, the babies while our students go to school.
So, but it's gonna be for 15 years, correct?
Correct.
Uh, the modernization that they're gonna do to it, what's that total amount gonna come out to?
So the modernization of the building, that's on the county, they will do that. So the lease agreement, the monthly fee is $500 a month and that includes utilities. Uh, we are also responsible for any H-Pak repairs.
So in other words, we're gonna be upside down on this? Cause if utilities are gonna be included, does it include electricity also as well?
Electricity, water.
Have we, have we gone to see how much it costs to run something like that every month? Do we have, uh, documentation from prior years to see what it was per month, month basis? Cause I don't wanna go into a contract for 15 years and we're gonna be upside down paying out of our pocket. They're gonna give us 500 a month and if we're gonna be paying out of pocket, I understand it's a service for the, for the, for our students, but still for us to go upside down on something like that? I mean, I don't know. Is that something that's, that's, something that's recommended by you guys?
So I know that we looked at, for instance, there, we have other districts that have similar facilities, you know, and there are lease agreements for that. I know that for a regular building, non-portable building, the range of the monthly fee ranges between 500 and 700 dollars.
Correct.
So this being a portable building and given the fact that they will do the, you know, the repairs, modernization needed. So, you know, we believe it's, you know, pretty close to what other districts do.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that. My thing is just we're gonna be paying for AC service also as well, or AC repairs also as well, correct? You just stated that?
Yeah.
Is there, when, when do we have to go into this contract? By when? Is there, is there a time limit where we have to go into this contract with them?
No.
I just, I mean, it's the three of us right here. I just, I mean, I, I don't know. I, I don't feel, I'd rather table it when all the five, cause I don't wanna vote. I'm, I'm gonna end the voting no and it's gonna die. I'd rather have for a discussion for all five.
Or?
Could we do that?
Yeah.
So, there's some, there's a motion by Mr. Romero and you seconded.
Yeah, I second.
Uh, so.
We're gonna take a vote, take a vote, I, I'm gonna vote no.
Well, you can either do two things, vote and vote and no, or well, actually.
Oh, you know what? I withdraw, I withdraw my, my second.
You withdraw your second. Mr. Romero, would you like to withdraw your, uh, your motion?
No.
No? So, there's no se- there, there's no second? Well, he would, uh, Mr. Alvarado withdrew his second. Is there a second? Motion dies for the la-
Can I make a motion to table?
For the last second. So there's a motion to table, there's a motion to table, uh, this, uh, item 13, is there a second? I will motion, I will second this motion. Adults in favor or tabling this item, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Mr. Romero, he, uh, he's voting no. So at this point.
It, it dies out?
Well, it, 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 it dies, there's no motion. So, Janet, if, if, so it died. So at this point, uh, there's no voting on this because.
That is correct.
It dies. So, uh, the, the, it needs to be brought up on the next board meeting, I guess, in August.
Unless there's a special board meeting or something, but as of right now, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather bring it back, Carlos. That way I could get a little bit more as far as like, just to see, I, I'll, I'll vote on it. I just wanna see exactly what it was that we were spending or what they were spending on a month-to-month basis over there. If I can make a better informed decision. I don't wanna go into something where we're gonna be paying a lot more out of pocket than, you know, what that we're gonna getting back in return. It's not, doesn't even have to do with that. What it has to do is just, I wanna make sure that we do something that's, that's correct. Cause I, I mean, I'm not gonna be here in 15 years. I mean, at least I don't think so. So that's why I'm just saying, you know?
So we'll bring it back. If, uh, if there's a special board meeting from now until then, let's just make sure that we'll put it back.
Yeah, well, we can bring it back. Um, and we'll give you more information in regards to the cost. Um, you know, the only thing to, just to, just to add is, um, you know, because these are our students that we do service.
Correct.
And, um, there's no charge, you know, for our families. These are very needy, uh, families. So, you know, sometimes there's a, a cost sharing, if you wanna ca- call it. So in essence, the cost sharing would be, you know, some of the services that we would provide for them in turn because they're providing the, the service to our families which are, they're very much in need. But again, we can, uh, bring back some more information if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
That was M13. M14 renewal agreement between Calexico Unified School District and for the School Solutions Incorporated for Library Management System for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Some motion by Mr. Romero?
No.
Oh, Mr. Alvarado, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M15 renew agreement between Calexico Unified School District and Masly, Ma- Masly, Masly Corporation for Mobile Device Management System licenses for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M16 service acco- service, service maintenance renew agreement between Calexico Unified School District and NOR Systems Incorporated for Quality Swimming Pool Equipment and Schedule Maintenance for Calexico High School.
So moved.
All second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M17 agreement between Calexico, service agreements between Calexico Unified School District and Medic First Air For Automated Extraordinary Defibrillators, AED.
So moved.
Second with the, uh, with, with discussion. So we already have these AEDs in our, in our schools, right?
Right. So this is a renewal to provide the service, check the battery, make sure that they're working.
And all that. So, okay, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Adults in favor, please say aye.
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 I said aye.
Oh, motion passes 3-0. M18 memorandum of understanding between Calexico Unified School District and Imperial County Office of, of Education regarding the Escape ERP Business Process Management System for the Intercredit Fiscal Human Resource and Payroll Applications.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Uh, adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M19 memorandum of, of understanding between Calexico Unified School District and Imperial County Office of Education, Course teaching induction program for 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. Memorandum of Understanding between Calexico Unified School District and Orlando Guadalupe Academy and Vincent Memorial High School for Scope of Services and Products and Products during the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M21 memorandum of understanding between Calexico Unified School District and Calexico Mission School for Scope of Services and Products during the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M22 memorandum of understanding between Imperial County Office of Education, Migrant Program Region 6, MB County Office of Education to Implement at Calexico Unified School District for the Implementation and Participation of the Cal- of California Migrant Mini Court Program.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M23 memorandum of, of understanding between Calexico Unified School District and Imperial Valley College for Data Sharing from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M24 proposal between Calexico Unified School District and Ford Mesa Commercial Vehicle Center for the Purchase of One 2020 F350 Service Truck for the Transportation Department. 2020? Not 2021?
It looks like the vehicle is a 2020.
But is it a, is it a new vehicle?
It, it is a new vehicle. Um, and the reason why it is 2020, because that was the one that we could find that met our requirements, as having a crane and a compressor.
It's a new vehicle, same warranties.
Same everything.
Everything, okay.
It's just a, it's just that, the one we found.
It just happened to be a leftover 2020?
Yes.
Okay.
There wasn't nothing here available for us?
There, it's a commercial vehicle. So Ford Robinson wasn't able to provide that and nowhere in California did we find a truck that met our requirements that we needed. So the nearest one was Mesa, Arizona.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M, that was M24, M25, 2021 designation of CIA representatives to LEAK. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado.
Second.
Second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M26 escorted report Williams Union Phone Complaint, June 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M27 agriculture careers technical education in Centagram for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M28 single plan for student achiev- achievements, SPSA, for the 2021, 2022, I should read, school years, for the following school, oh, for the following schools. Blanche Charles Elementary, Cesar Chavez Elementary, Dual Elementary, Jefferson Elementary, Kennedy Gardens Elementary, Mainz Elementary, Rockwood Elementary, Enrique Carmen Junior High School, William Moreno Junior High School, Calexico High School, and Aurora High.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado, second by Mr. Uh, Romero. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M29 variable term waiver for 2021, 2022 school year for Daniel, uh, Daniel W. Johnson, Jr. and Jenny Pacheco.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M30 variable term waivers for Certified Personnel, Speech Pathologists for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M31 approval of local control of cannibalism plan, LCAP, for the school year 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Romero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alvarado. Adults in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3-0. M32 child development program contract and resolution for fiscal year 2021, 2022 for the state preschool program at Kenny Gardens Elementary School. This is a, uh, okay, this is a resolution.
So, I'll make a motion approve.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado.
Second.
Second by Mr. Romero, rocall, Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado?
Yes.
And myself, Mr. Calderon, yes. Motion passes, resolution passes 3-0. M33, resolution regarding disposition of surplus assets, non-assets furniture at Jefferson Elementary.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alvarado.
Second.
Second by Mr. Romero. This is a resolution, rocall, Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Calderon, yes. Motion, resolution passes 3-0. M34 resolution regarding the disposition of surplus assets, non-assets, uh, technology equipment, Cesar Chavez Elementary.
So moved.
I'll se- I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. This is a rocall, uh, Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado?
Yes.
Myself, Mr. Calderon, yes. Resolution passes 3-0. M35, resolution authorizing petition to Imperial County Board of Supervisors for the Cancellation of Unsolved Measure V Bond Proceeds as provided by Section 15200 of Ed Code.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Romero, second by Mr. Alvarado. Rocal, Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarado?